This is true.
Oh, wait.
Do you want us to wait a few minutes so you can? Alright, so it's 6:15 and we will call the meeting to work, just so everyone knows the meeting is being. Alright, so we're going to discuss vote on reopening tonight. So I want to just give you guys an overview of how the site is going to run because we're going to do it a little bit differently than we have done in the past. So what we're going to do is tonight, the questions are going to be, any remaining questions are going to be asked by the board about proposed reopening plans. After those questions have been answered, each board member will have an opportunity to speak regarding their position on reopening and how they came to that position. After each board member has had their say, we'll entertain a motion and call the vote. Once a decision is reached, we will begin a conversation of implementation. Actually, we might have to do that before we vote, at least some of it, but we will have a conversation about implementation for whatever model we're going to be going with. Tonight, we will actually not have citizens' comments during this meeting. We expect to receive information regarding fall sports at this meeting, but no decision regarding fall sports will be made. We have scheduled a follow-up meeting for Monday, August 10th, to vote on fall sports. If there are any technical issues during this meeting, please call 336-5728, extension 7689. So last week, yeah, was it last week? Yeah, last week, I didn't, I wasn't able to do my question, so if you guys don't mind, I will start with the questions that I had from last time. And most of them have been answered with all of your questions. So just give me a second. Alright, we did that last night. Alright, so PTA is mentioned in this document in a couple of talks, and I was curious what role was being proposed for PTA?
I saw it in one spot.
It was in one spot, then in the, then in the attendances?
Okay, so it's just sharing of information to help with the review of the information that the board and administration would put out. It's my understanding that they'd be sharing any information that we produce.
Okay, so they're just helping us disseminate information?
Yeah, perfect.
That's my understanding. Alright, let's see, who is overseeing the implementation of whichever plan that we choose? What do we have for checks and balances and what system of accountability will there be?
So we spoke today of the pending board action. Joe would have a team, there would be a leadership information or implementation team at the elementary school. I would meet with that team once a week, but that team, you know, would be those contributors that would have to implement whatever plan you choose. And Anne is the leader of the middle high in the same, and I don't think she's chosen team members yet. I think that's something they'll be working on depending on board action tonight. So that's the plan going forward. We know we would have to hit the ground running, and that's our expectation in regards to any plan you pick.
And they report to you weekly?
Weekly, yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Right, I think I've said this a couple of times, but I do want to, I do want to ask it again and confirm. If we use a hybrid model, how will we ensure that there will be equal quality instruction between students in the physical and remote classrooms?
We have been exploring at the elementary level is V-Lax for elementary school students. They're still enrolled in the school. And have Karen Thompson be the liaison between families that decide to go that route. So that would be one way to meet their needs, and V-Lax has done it for a while. The issue is that they, I think they've had a thousand elementary students enrolled, maybe a week.
As far as equity in the middle and high school, I think what we're looking at, certain people assigned to communicate with people who are getting the remote lesson to make sure that their quality instruction, they're getting good assessment, and we know what they learned and what they haven't learned. So for me, that's, that could be an equity issue if somebody has no internet, and that's a huge equity issue for us. So we're looking at people that will help us personalize those and make sure we know we have really good communication with the student, the family. And if it's inside school remote, we're going to have qualified people working with those groups of kids. So I think that's part of implementation, when you said, did we get closer to this? I think we'll have a better idea of what numbers and who is keeping out.
Okay.
And by the nature of what we're in, we're going to have to be distributing paper packets for kindergarten preschool, to some extent kindergarten and first grade. So if we're distributing paper packets to them, then people that don't have internet would be accessing some paper things as well.
Alright, and to clarify with V-Lax, so V-Lax is an option that people can use if they're going remote. They can choose to do some V-Lax courses, and that's optional thing, and we're not saying that if you go remote, you have to do V-Lax. Alright, perfect, alright, cool. Well, the only other thing that I had on here that we haven't already covered was a communication plan. I had given you guys a draft framework that I had started working up based off of the NHSBA recommendations. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look through that. I did meet with Wayne and Anne today to fill in some of the blanks to make sure things would work out. You know, that we would be working together and not in each other's way and everything, you know what I mean? What we want to do is get in the administration's way. We certainly don't want to get in the communication officer's way. But how can we go with the school, the school board administration's associations? Recommendation that the board taking that role in it did not be a hinder, speaking of what a hell of a hinder. So we did work some of that out today. You know, I don't know if we need to, you know, vote on the communication plan or not. Do you know if we would have to vote on communications plan?
No, I think that would be an action that you would take, and you modify it as you go, so you refine it. So I don't think you have to have a definitive communication plan to do this. Obviously, that the board has a communication plan, and I think it's important, it's dynamic because things might change.
Absolutely, yeah. Did any question when I handed out? You guys can always. Last week, put a bunch of stuff in, because I was going to talk about it when I had my question, because I gave them up for extra color.
You didn't actually work out these down?
Yes, 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 we have them written up. But yeah, so I can, I can do that, I can send you guys the updated documents, I can put the edits in, you guys be okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, cool, then I will do that. And that's all that I have.
Well, I just had a couple that I had, I think I emailed, I lose track of how many times we were emailing questions, but I think I had a couple. Actually, if it's okay, start with, your question is Joe and Anne about the hybrid instruction. I, that prompted a question in me, so I'd like to start with that. Um, so for the V-Lax at the elementary school, it said that's an option. If they go remote, they want V-Lax, so if they're remote and they don't choose V-Lax, that's what the most paper packet stuff. Is that what you're saying, or maybe not?
I think that would be the most streamlined way to produce work for them. Otherwise, teachers would be doing kind of double duty. They'd be able to reproduce what they had done in class and then augment it maybe with a video of what was going on.
Okay, and then for the middle high school, and you had said that you would be assigning certain people to communicate with the, you know, students and families that are remote. So that's like to ask them if everything's going okay, on top of the teacher doing their job of actually teaching, are those people what we teach them? How does that, um?
So we do have the director of personalized learning, who has already offered and wants to be assisting with the remote learning process as part of personalized learning programs. And we briefly talked about today, if we choose that, if we're going to implement that, it might need that there are structured visits with the parent and the student to make sure every, all the communication avenues are wide open, to make sure work is understood, that it's done in a timely fashion. So we increase that level of accountability, whether it's online learning or packet learning. I think that's where we saw some of the hurdles that we're still dealing with as of even today about kids completing that remote learning. It was hard, it was challenging. So the director of personalized learning is really invested in this, and I think we have a few other teachers who would really like to help that out as part of extended learning programs. So I think we can do this once we know if we're going to be implementing it, for how many kids, I don't know.
So where does the actual teacher who's teaching the subject come into this?
So, so I would think that the person who's helping with the remote learning would be like a liaison. So I'm preparing the lessons, and she understands my timelines, but maybe I don't have time to call every day or every other day. So we can keep those, I think the big thing is the communication.
So it's communication between the teachers who are teaching the remote and the liaison, not so much as a, I'm checking up on you, teacher A, type of thing. Okay, alright, okay, cool.
I think Karen's really good, I'm sorry, the director of personalized learning, I think she's really the perfect person to add.
But you know, personality is personality.
Well, yeah, but she, and she is, I mean, she's so, she's just so adept at the personalized aspect of it, and she knows the students really well. So I think that's a really good choice.
To fit in with your goal for monitoring personalized learning.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
A good choice.
Yeah, I agree.
And then my questions that I had, I'm thinking I sent them, I'm not sure, maybe it was the last meeting, I think I have these for, I don't know. But, so as we were saying earlier, we were here last night, meeting with Legal, so our brains are, I think, trying. But, so anyway, so, but, so about more stuff about the hybrid plan, it's the middle high, well, the hybrid slash modified full access, because it's not a hybrid, but for purposes, we'll call it a hybrid, because that's what they call this. But, so for that plan, in one of the documents, it said, and I know we talked about this, I think like two weeks ago or so, that it says that 15% to 20% of the students at the middle high school would, would not likely be returning, they'd be remote. And then we talked about, and it was, okay, maybe it's not 15%, 20% of all the students, it's those responding to the survey, which, you know. So, so if the plan was based on, was the plan based, that's a better question, was the plan based on 15% to 20% of all students being remote? And so that would be a higher number being out of the building, and you'd be able to do more in the building, or spread out more, or no, okay?
No, I don't, I think that was just a shot in the dark. You don't know what you don't know.
Yeah.
How can you plan?
Yeah.
So as you said, 20% of the people responded to the survey, which would be about a much smaller number than 20% of 250 people, so.
Yeah.
And our numbers are changing daily. We have people who are moving, we have people who are moving in, so it's changing.
Okay, so you understand where my question was going, is if you thought it was going to be 20% of 250, and 20% of 80, that's, will you really have the room then?
Very, very different scenario.
Very different. And along that line, last night, Manana approved their hybrid plan, and I saw that they, at a, now that they have approved it, they are sending a survey to all parents to see how many students, it's like, okay, now you know what the plan is. How many of you will likely be remote? How many of you will likely, because there's an actual hybrid where it's half in, half out, half in, half out. So I don't know if, I know, but you know, surveys, you're gonna smack us, but that's not, once we nail down a plan, if we go that route, I'm just saying, it might, that was kind of, I thought a good idea to say, okay, now you know what it is.
Excellent.
Maybe we can get closer, because it is hard, so when you don't know, how do you decide?
So one of the thoughts we have, when the big package, the mailing package goes out and the student schedules are in there, will also be a form. Sean Robinson has worked on some kind of a form, he's got some input from some people that will say, you know, you're checking off, you agree that this is what you want to do, so we get the feedback as soon as we can, and it might be an online form, so you can do it right online. So I think that's, those numbers are going to be critical for us.
Can I interject? So I think that, and you guys can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I think that it's, whatever, whatever way we choose, whatever the board votes on, alright, it's likely that, you know, things are going to change, and things are going to adapt. And I think that, I hope that we're all on the same page, that communication with parents, you know, and staff, and just the community at large is going to be ongoing, soliciting feedback is going to be ongoing, soliciting input is going to be ongoing. So it's not like we're asking for your opinions, you know, during this part, then we're going to ignore you all this other time. It sounds like, and I'm, I would say it has to be, that, you know, the community outreach is ongoing, throughout the entire process, throughout the entire kind of pandemic, really.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Sorry, Joe, you had something?
One other part about the remote, we were talking about having certain times when people could return, like it could be in and out all the time. Like a realistic marker would be the end of a quarter, you know? Somebody says they need, they were remote, but now they want to come back in. It's hard to have them come back in, in say, September 29th. It makes a little bit more sense to have them come in at the beginning of the second quarter, November 4th, whatever it is.
Yeah, would they lose, during that timeframe, would they lose, how much would, you know, educational space would they lose?
It would still be remote, it's just very difficult to be that flexible.
So I would think that if, you know, one of the reasons that a student would want to, you know, come back into the building early if they were doing remote, if, if they were having, you know, huge remote issues, I would think that they could have a conversation with the principals and explain that. And, you know, you guys, I mean, I trust that you guys would be able to, you know, make that determination. You know, I don't think that would have to necessarily be a board thing.
I would just speak to that, that I agree with Joe, that the remote work on until, until it was a desired time and a quarter makes sense. My sense is perhaps some parents, some families are going to opt to choose remote if we go with a hybrid model and take a wait-and-see attitude. So we could very well have families who, after four or five or six weeks, or say, wow, they really are doing a great job at school. My child's feeling left out because all their friends are going to school, and I now feel safe because I've watched it. I wouldn't be surprised if we got a lot of wait-and-sees right. And so that is when then we're going to have parents reaching out to administration and say, okay, you guys are doing a great job. Johnny wants to come back to school, how do we go about that? So I agree, going into the school year, there needs to be some sort of, some sort of setup that we know, that they know, okay, if you want it, if you decide it has to be on a quarterly basis or on a special, obviously, if there's special remote learning's not working, we don't have internet, we have to lock this or whatever. But then we, we can't just let everybody say, I'm not going to send my kid to the school for the first week or the first two weeks, and then start inundating everything. Then the plan is set to fail. I do agree, we need to have, establish a protocol and a procedure for switching from remote to back to in-class learning. That's a very good point.
And are you, see, and I feel like that's something that we can trust the principals to do?
Absolutely.
Or do you think that's something that needs to come from the board?
I don't think it's come from the board, I think we need to be prepared, I think we need to be prepared for families initially wanting to say, let's, let's everybody else see how it goes. But in three weeks, when everything looks so great, I want my kid back in school. And I don't, you can't present it as that's an option. You can't present it as an option for you to start out remote and then wait and see. You need to go in this with a, you know, this isn't going to be something you can automatically one day just send your kid back to school, because that week's having for the system that's already plays in working.
And I just, and I just want to be clear that we are leaving that to the principals.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
It would be part of the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think that's important for them to know. If they, if they need to put that into implementation, then it's kind of incumbent on us to make that clear, that, you know, we're not going to micromanage that. We're not going to direct that, you know, it's not on them, and that's our expectation, and, you know, please include that in your plan, and.
Right, exactly, I just think it does need to be part of the plan.
Yeah, 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 no, I agree.
You're going to want, you're going to have kids wanting to come back every day. There's going to be one new family wanting to come back, it just can't be.
Yep, no, I agree.
It can't be managed properly that way, I don't think, I think there needs to be some set guidelines.
Okay, cool.
Does that apply vice versa, too? If somebody's in school and wants to opt back out?
I think that, again, would have to be a discussion to have with the principals. I don't think that if, you know, if, I mean, my own personal opinion, if a, if, you know, a student, a parent chooses to put the student in school, say we go hybrid, say we do whatever, if the student is in class and all of a sudden there's, they may be seeing something that they don't think is safe, or they're not comfortable with, or whatever it is, you know, how are you going to tell a parent that, hey, you chose to put them in there, you can't take them out? I, you, I don't think you can do that.
There's not the same disruption.
No, 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 there's not.
Bringing them into the classroom is a disruption, changing classroom layout, change, changing plans.
Right.
Losing a kid to, for a family to decide to go remote doesn't have implications to the entire classroom.
Exactly, but Jim was asking, you know, the opposite.
Yeah, no, it's very good question.
And I think the opposite is, you know, I'm sorry, Kayla?
I don't think we can tell parents that you chose to be in the building, so you need to stay in the, and if someone gets too dumb, we don't want them to stay.
Well, there's only one process for that.
That's a, yeah, that's a whole, that's a whole different ball of wax.
But I'm saying, it's the same type of idea with kids. That would be truly good, remote incoming staff, I think, is acceptable, but not the other way around.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, in fact, because it's like easier, and in some ways, that could help the situation in the classroom, because now you have a little more space, so.
Yep.
Yeah, that needs to be like really, you know, more flexible than the date of you can come back date, you know, yeah. Um, I just wanted to more.
Go ahead.
And this one's just a quick one that, I mean, I know we probably are, we talked about this piece before, I think I talked about it a lot, but I just want to get on, you know, say before, you know, before we finally make a decision, but I'm concerned, and I know I've asked a lot of questions about it, about the workflows, the flow of it, how it is when a teacher's, at the middle high school, teaching in person, live streaming themselves out to a kid, kids remotely, and teaching, you know, however it is with the ancillary room, whether they're watching him or them or whatever, or it's another, you know, person passing along information and supervising. So I think that hashing it out is, if we go with the hybrid plan or the modified, hybrid modified Flaxus plan, is going to be an implementation. I would just say that I would really like it if it's just super, I mean, I know communication's going to be a big thing. I think we keep, got to keep touching on that in almost everything we say tonight, but super, super clear in writing, in meetings, but follow-up in writing. So, you know, with that, what's the expectation, get, you know, it's a collaborative effort, what do you want it to look like? Yeah, what's clearly communicated, expectations, everything, because really, it could snowball into something huge, and it just, if, if people are not understanding exactly, like how this is working, what's expected of you. So I'm just concerned, because, you know, I've asked a bunch of questions, and I've, I've understood it, I've asked questions, then I didn't understand it now based on those answers, but I thought I did, and I went back and listened to the video, and it's, if, if, you know, I can see how, you know, how many people on your staff that might be doing that. Well, actually, some, only some will be involved in ancillary, but theoretically, they all could have some kid at home, you know, or, you don't know. So if my confusion multiplied by however many different perspectives, so, you know, writing, getting it in writing, I think is your best friend with this one.
Right, and I would like to add that I don't know how to say thank you enough to be here, because I have people in the building today still grading papers that should have been done last May.
Yeah.
I can't say enough good about this faculty, I really commend them.
Thank you. Um, oh, this one, it came up last night in our meeting with Matt Upden as well, he brought this up too, but I had it on my list. There was a webinar I watched last, within the last month, don't ask me which one, I think we all have watched 80 webinars and Zooms and things, so. But they talked about consistency in implementation of the safety protocols, and that the joint loss committee should be involved, and, and Matt brought that up last night. And also, on this webinar, it says the board member, the board should have a representative on the joint loss committee. Now, I know when I was first on the board, you know, 10 years ago, for the first, like, two years I was on the board, like, I was the rep for the joint loss. Then the superintendent at that time, at one point, I think, kind of, we discussed it, talked us into now, oh, you don't need a board rep. So is there a joint loss committee, and we just don't have a rep? Okay, so we should have a rep, back on that. So that's, that's that, so I can leave that up to maybe a future discussion, when we can decide who our rep would be, or whenever Sean.
Do you want to put that on to the agenda for, just trying to see, is that, is that our regular board meeting?
I think we push it to the 19th, 18th, something like that, Anne, I think, the 19th, 18th. Yeah, I think that would be good. Yeah, find out what it entails, and see who is available to do it.
I believe when this first happened, you did get some information from Jake, because we had a meeting right prior to this. I remember meeting in the cafeteria in our six-foot space out, and we did some recommendations for the board at that time.
Oh, okay, and I just didn't remember that that's where that came from. Like, I remember being on that committee long ago, when we met over in the high school, and I don't even remember why we got a board member off of it, but it was decided at some point, I don't remember that. That was, that was probably eight years ago, we, but I don't know, but anyway, um. Okay, oh, yeah, my, my other thing, and this is more for the board, and we were talking about, if we have, you know, certain things, whatever we, we plan, we approve, you know, it's going to be fluid with implementation, and we'll approve it as, you know, knowing there's details in implementation, but there may be things the board wants to modify. So I just wanted to have this on here, so we know as we go through this, to think about if there are basic things that we want to kind of modify, make sure we remember that, put it in the motion.
I was going to give instructions for the motion.
Okay, cool, yeah, I just had that noted, because I'm, because I'm, you know, I just want to make sure, because I know I have a few things, but I don't have it appropriate right now, it'll be as we go on, but, I think, you know, so. I'm just reading down my notes.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what the better way to do that is. Yeah, I don't know, so just.
Yeah, yeah, but, fill it out.
Yeah, exactly.
I think, and that was, that was all my notes. There you go.
So navigate.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, alright, thank you.
So if anybody tries to come in, we have to wait here in the meeting.
No, we don't, because they can come here.
Oh, you're right, we do have a physical location, that's right, alright, cool.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hey, I had a question relating back to the V-Lax question, remote learning. I understand elementary school, that that's probably a much more feasible option. However, I thought in the high school, that our primary goal is to have live streaming remote learning from our staff. And I just wanted to show we're not encouraging that, them to come elsewhere for their remote learning through V-Lax, because I think that, that's something that we want to have confidence that our staff can do and do well.
And I think that we're using V-Lax, kind of like we've used it all along, that we're using that for an option, and I apologize, I just, this thing, this doesn't fit right. We're using kind of V-Lax as an option to, some students will find some courses that, you know, we don't offer or expanded. Yeah, and my, and my kid took a course.
I just want to present it as, that's our remote learning.
Right, and that's, and that's why, that's why, yes, I once had the same concern, I wanted to make sure. It's like, it's to augment what we're doing, not the point.
It's a choice.
Yeah, exactly.
I want, I want people to know they have the power of choice.
Cool.
Yeah.
And I think that's actually really important.
Yeah.
Kayla?
So for the elementary, Joe, you had said V-Lax would be an option, but then there is some concern around a waiting list, or do we have a plan to ensure equity should we need remote and in-person?
Yeah, so the plan, coinci, you know, coincidental plan is what we've been doing all along, that somebody might be a remote teacher because they have some medical issue, and we pool the medical, you know, the people that may be remote, they might become a remote teacher of K1 and 2. But we won't know until we know what kids are out, and we won't know until what staff members have a, a medical condition or another thing that prevents them from coming. But that, if there are some teachers who are remote, they would kind of take over the, you know, we'd have to work out the communication between that remote teacher and the grade level teachers, but that would be kind of taking the lead on that part. Assume that we're going to have some remote teachers.
Yeah. Yeah, I have, because that was actually kind of on my notes that I didn't mention when we were talking about implementation and fleshing things out. But now that Joe mentioned that, I know, WUFCU across the river there, I know that's one of the things, I don't know if they landed on it, but it was being tossed around. And of course, they have a lot more teachers. And so like, if remote teachers, like, they could be the remo- And so like, if remote teachers, like, they could be the remote teachers to teach the remote kids. So if that happens to work out in some fashion, even at the elementary, could we, we know, like, you're like, look at that to maybe try to, because I'm just going to try to take the load and stress off of a teacher teaching in three different spots at once and trying to make that work if, you know what I mean? Like, if it, if it turns out we have enough remote and then, and, because I, I think it's going to be a big teamwork thing where you can cover this, you can cover that, and, you know what I mean? Kind of work it, we'll try to work it out collaboratively.
Big challenge.
Oh, it's a, it's a big puzzle and all the pieces aren't even there.
No, they're not.
Yeah.
Jim?
Kayla, do you have a note?
No, go for it.
I just, I just had two, and they're related to the comments uh in the staff surveys. Uh, the first one is just, is it, what's the protocol for using textbooks this year? Have we thought about that?
So usually a textbook is assigned to a student and I, I think that's, if we are here and the kids are onsite, are we going to be giving out the textbooks? Are we going to resort to digital resources so that they can use their laptop? Every student in six to twelve should have a laptop. So I think there's some questions about that. If the book is assigned to a student, where do we keep it? How do we ensure that only that student is using it? I'm more concerned about classes like robotics with all those tiny little pieces. And if we worked on teamwork in those classes, that's one of the twenty-first century expectations is that you become a collaborative member of a team. And I'm very worried about classes like that because the pieces are so small and there's no way to wipe them down. There's no way that, you know, there's so many manipulatives there. So I, I think we, that's part of why we need the teachers back with additional time before school opens to say, how do we implement a program in a very different, safe way? And textbooks are part of that puzzle. I, I don't have any support right now.
And so like with math, they're consumable, sort of, they're not hardcover books, Jim. Um, and every student gets their own, they get their own home book, they get their own student workbook. Then in Reading Street, for most of the grades, it's their own book. The one thing that we'll have to do, like in the upper grades, they do novel studies in their classrooms. So, you know, normally they might share, like I do it at nine o'clock and you do it at ten o'clock. Now we have the two, two separate novels in order to, you know, not be sharing the books. And it's kind of the same thing with the classroom libraries. Kids will get a certain set of books when it's, you know, free read, and they'll work from their bins and just go from there. And we'll do the same thing with library books where they'll, for a week they'll have, this is the kindergarten bin for Ms. Martell and they just take from there and then those will go out of circulation for like a week. And then they have a second week worth of books to go through, or maybe we'll do it every two weeks. So, but like Anne said, we got a ton of those little thing of the jigs that kids have all the time, so. But what we did with music and P E and art is we rearranged the special schedule so that we can use the three sixty cleaner and so the equipment, whatever they use, they'll lay out on the gym floor, on the tables in the art room or on the floor in the music room and use their three sixty to sanitize all the things. And then there won't be another phys ed, P E or music or art class coming in for a couple of hours. So that stuff can be reused after being sanitized.
Um, and the other one again is related to the survey. A person was talking about athletics, but then asked a question about, what about clubs? If sports are allowed to continue, what if a club has one to ten members? So I just was wondering, has any thought been given to the extracurricular clubs?
So at, at the middle high school, the two primary areas of concern are the magic club that Mr. Fortson has. It meets once a week and they get the magic card games. That's less than ten kids, but again, you're handling cards and I, I'm not sure that we can do that. I know some of the kids keep eat their cards in individual plastic wrappers because they love them so much. So it's, it's an exciting club for the kids and I, but I'm, I'm not sure how we can share cards. I don't think they can share them. Um, and, and then of course, the yearbook. Yearbook is an extracurricular activity. There are less than ten kids usually on the yearbook staff that work with two teachers and I'm sure that they're going to be able to work with those kids, so.
And for me, if we, we don't really have a club, but it's more about physical distancing rules than a number anymore. Originally, the number was ten, but now it's more about physical distancing. Kayla, Jim?
No, that's it.
Kayla, did you got something?
Um, so, I know I keep asking those questions, so I apologize. I don't know if we have a dev on, you still can't hear me. I don't want to yell. Do we know how many laptops we ordered and did we add to the order to cover any staff? If we go remote, do we know?
My, my understanding for parent educators that the plan would be that they could take a desktop home and we should give them training on that and provide them with the camera and microphone so they can do it from home over the desktop. And you don't believe we have any money budgeted to buy people individual laptops. I mean, I don't, I don't have one, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Molly?
One thing I, I thought, I didn't have it written down, but in, in the talking and, and we probably will delve into it more if we delve into some stuff about implementation. I'm, I'm not sure which, how much we're going to get into that, but I know one thing, if I, if, if I was looking at sending my kid back or if I was a staff member, I would say, and I know it's not in our plan and I know it is, some districts do have this spelled out in their plans, some don't, um, but what is our trigger number? Like, say U twenty-nine has a trigger number in their, in for. They have a trigger number for when they will go full remote, like X many cases in the county. Um, and also what, well, that needs to be, I think, determined and maybe brought back to us at least for, but implementation, I think, I think we, we, it should be, we should be updated regularly, especially like at our next meeting and, but like, the trigger number, we really need to have one, I, I think. And then, um, the actual steps for what happens if somebody, student or staff are positive, you know, like, just like, it's the people's lives that need, so the parents can say, okay, if this happens, I know it's going to go bam. So just to keep that in mind.
So if the board does something other than remote, Anne is meeting with the two nurses and getting guidance from CDC and Department of Ed and they'll try to put something together very soon. So it's not something we'd want to wait until the nineteenth.
Yep.
But obviously on the nineteenth, you've got to look over their whole implementation process and give us feedback.
Um, because, uh, oh my gosh, I lost my, I totally just lost what I was going to say. About that, about numbers, about, oh, yeah, oh, no, because Governor Sununu has already said that he doesn't, and I don't know, you know, is it, is, you know, I don't know, he might change his mind too. But he has already said, like, he doesn't envision shutting the whole state down again. So I think that, that way, like, every district really needs to have their own number, so, yeah.
And, and part of the conversation is, do we use the Hinsdale? Do we use Cheshire County? Do we use Brown Road? So we, we do, we haven't had the depth of conversation around that issue that we'll have. But we definitely need a, here we go, um, parents, we've been two weeks because we had, you probably read the preschool case where somebody, a staff member felt ill, they tested the staff member, the staff member was negative, uh, so now they're coming back. But the smart thing under those circumstances, obviously, is what they did. So we're, we'll develop that protocol and get something that you feel comfortable with prior to opening. If we do not, if we're in school.
Kayla?
So should we talk about what we want to do? So we, we have all these questions, we need to, I think, kind of go and figure out what we're doing, so then.
Right, and that, and that's kind of where, you know, it's kind of the chicken and the egg. You know what I mean? So I almost feel like we need to vote on the plan, then say what our expectations are. Once we get that plan, um, you know, Wayne's going to have stuff for us on the nineteenth. So I mean, I suppose we could change some stuff then too. How much do we do tonight? How much do we, you know, wait to see what they come up with? You know, so that's, that's where I could really use and feed that to you guys. Julia?
I'd say we come up with a plan. I think we all are prepared to discuss our concerns, our hopes, our dreams, how, how we'd like this to go. And then I think we put our trust and faith in the administration and the staff to come back to us, hopefully with a whole lot of the information by the nineteenth. But I think, once we make a determination, we need, they need to have time to digest and process that and come up with how they're going to make a plan to implement it and to have that expectation that that would begin tonight, I think, would be unreasonable.
And that's kind of where I was starting to go, because it's like, at some, at some point, whatever we say, they have to make work. And if there's something that we say they can't make work, you know what I mean?
From us tonight, what it is we want to see the plan look like.
Yep.
I think we're all going to have our own personal visions and, and ideas that
Yep.
they're going to absorb all that, we're going to vote on a plan and then they can magically find a way to make that work for us.
Yes, yes. Kayla?
Yeah, that's basically mirroring that is I think, once we vote and then we can kind of each speak to what our expectations are and then I can.
I think we speak before the.
Yeah, we each get to kind of speak our piece and say what we would like to see as the board we vote on the plan and our expectations for the plan.
Sure, we, once we, once we get the plan, you can say, and our expectations of that are this. And then, once the expectations are out there, then it's up to them to figure out, I could say them, then it's up to the administration and our, to, um, you know, take those expectations and find a way to make them reality. Molly?
So I have a logistical question. So, um, in making the motion, so we said we'd make the motion and then talk about our expectations. I know we talked last night, um, about, you know, with Matt Upton and, and I drafted a motion, um, I was asked to draft a motion, which I'm not married to, so my goodness, any thinking you want to do of it, that is fine with me. And just for the rationale for how it's set up, so it was, you know, we accept whichever plan, I put down all three in both cases. And I know Matt had said, you know, that the motion needs to be worded that we accept the plan knowing that any necessary details, not currently in the plan, like details about things that are in the plan, will be worked out in implementation.
Yep.
But also included a section that said, and the board modification below, the details of which then will also be in it. So anyways, details or implementation, we know there's details right now that need to be worked out. We know, I think, from previous discussions, I get a sense that there are one or two things maybe in the plan right now that we would like to discuss and maybe vote on changing.
Yep.
Um, so would that be a separate motion to make modifications?
Let's, let's do the, um, let's do the vote on the model that we're going to go with, all right? And then let's have the conversation as far as what would be, because I think that, you're right. I think that we do have, just in the course of the conversations that we've already had, I think that we've come up with some things that we all know that we either want or don't want. And so let's discuss those, knowing that it's not an all-inclusive list, um, but those are the things that, you know, uppermost on our minds.
So discuss those before the vote, then we can, so we can list them as a modification in one motion or do a separate motion to modify what we just approved?
I mean, I, I would say approve the mo-, the model first because that could, you know, some of the stuff that we're saying, you might want modified, not, not be included in the plan that we go with.
Oh.
Do you know what I mean?
So then, then actually you're talking possibly four motions. One to approve the plan for one building, one to approve the plan for the other, one to modify the plan we just approved and one to modify the other plan we just approved.
You can include, your, your, the motion that you have, I think, the motion that you have worked up here includes, you know, modifications and, and modifications and expectations.
Or details regarding.
Details. So, um, we don't have to say, you know, the ones listed below.
Are you sure? I'm just saying, do we want them in writing? Are we sure we don't want to say it?
We don't know what they all are. How can you put into writing what you don't know?
Yeah, so that's why I said a second, because we know, how, I just.
But we're not, what I'm saying is, we're not going to, we're not going to come up with the absolute perfect motion, the absolute perfect, the same way that we don't have the absolute perfect plans. So I would say, just, you know, with our modifications and expectations, however it's worded, I don't think it needs to be listed now, we discuss them afterwards, uh, we give them. They're going to work on a plan, they're going to bring some stuff back to us on the nineteenth. Uh, we then go over and make further adjustments.
So we say, like modifications, like, you know, that we talked about, if it's like screening.
Yep.
Say we all want that modified.
Then we.
Then we put in the minutes that we want it modified and then it shows up. Okay, just so it's in writing somewhere.
Yes, it should be in the minutes and it's being recorded, so the stuff that we talked about.
Okay, definite, I agree, it doesn't have to be in the motion.
Yeah, that, that's kind of where I'm going.
Okay, I just needed it in writing someplace.
Yep, I, I agree. Julia?
I'm sorry, just, just a real quick, I, I kind of disagree on a couple of issues with that.
Okay.
If it is law, I'm not talking about implementation, how are you going to do it? But for me personally, uh, there are some changes, some fundamental changes to the plan that I can't vote for unless they're part of the plan. So we, I can't vote to say, okay, I'm going to vote on the hybrid plan because I can't do that unless some of the modifications.
Are they, are they common to all the plans or?
Um, not necessarily, I'm just saying, I, I just feel like there are certain motions that, that as written, if we approve it as written and then go back and make modifications, that gets a little muddy up because I can't vote for a plan unless some of the modifications are guaranteed.
So, so then.
For example, I can't say, I don't want a child in the school unless screening is part of the plan. That means to be in the motion either.
So we can do the, um, we can do those first, but you will need to do them for all three plans for both buildings. So we need to go through six. And that's fine, we can, but that's what we would need to do.
See the logistics of this, there's no easy way.
But when we do a motion, if we're approving something, sometimes we say modify.
Yep.
Or as amended and it noted the things that we want. So can we say this plan, including screenings, like discuss the changes we think need to be made and then say as amended?
You can.
So I, I think what you want to do is, you want to, someone needs to move and have a second. And then in discussion, you can, I would like to amend the motion to include.
Okay.
You'd vote on the amendment and then someone else might say, I have a second amendment. Vote on, once you have all the amendments lined up, then you vote for the motion as amended.
We got so far, we didn't see the obvious answer.
So is everybody, is that sound?
Yeah, that sounds good. I don't understand why we're going to do it six times, so that's assuming that somebody's going to move for all six of these options.
Because you're, you'd be picking out, you know, one plan and then maybe someone else has another one, then maybe, you know what I mean?
If it could be that there are six.
You would need to do the same for everybody. You couldn't just do, you know, yours and then Jim doesn't do his, you know what I mean? You have to do that, so you have to.
Right, that's where the motions come from.
Yeah, right.
Correct, but if we do it as Wayne said, that sounds like the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah, I think we also, I think we're also like looking at it like this, that we didn't see the easy, yeah, answer, yeah.
That's fine. So are there any further questions, like regular questions? All right, did we now want to go around and say our piece, you know, our thought process, where we came up with, where we're leaning? You know, what we would do? All right, so you guys are good with that? Who wants to go first?
The clockwise. Or the ten o'clock wise.
Do you want to go first?
I'll let Jim go, we never let Jim go.
All right.
Oh, okay, well, uh, all right, so, um, going through the survey and discussing, I don't think there's any right choice. There's arguments on both sides. I think the survey had a lot of dramatic points on, on all the options. So I think the task is to find. I think it's frustrating at every district, uh, every school board, every community in the country has to go through this without a national plan. I want to thank the, uh, the school committees for putting forth those efforts and making the recommendations for reentry. And I want to thank the, uh, the staff who participated in the survey. And as I said, a lot of the comments were very, very good. But having said all that, um, my inclination is to go with the recommendations of the reentry committee.
What's your, where are you leaning?
I'm leaning towards following the recommendations of the, the committee for both schools.
Can you state what those are, please?
I believe it's in school for elementary and hybrid for middle high school.
So in school for H E S, hybrid for H M H S.
Can I ask a quick question?
No, um, right now we are going to let the, um, board members speak. No, um, right now we are gonna let the, um, board members speak, um, there's gonna be no questions, no rebuttals, no trying to change their minds.
No, 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 but I'll do it when I get to me, but, okay.
You can do it when you get to you, but every board member's gonna have their chance, and it'll be uninterrupted, they will have the floor. So, um, alright, Julia, you have the floor.
Are you up next? Okay. Um, in true Julia fashion, I wrote a few notes down. Uh, first of all, I also want to thank you for all the work that went into preparing all the options presented to this board for the reopening of school in September. I know that I speak for all of us that countless hours have gone into making the best possible decision we can, both personally and as a collective group. Countless hours have been spent not only in meetings and webinars, but in personal research and soul searching, and an attempt to truly make an educated and heartfelt decision. The input from all the stakeholders is greatly appreciated and carried equal weight and validity from your Zoom chats, your emails to the board, and your survey responses. I do agree that the survey responses, everybody's response have, I've certainly read them all and taken them in heart, and I know we all have. All taken into consideration, we're trying to make a difficult decision in a difficult time, that best serves the school district and our community. Please know that the education of our students, as well as the safety, physical and emotional health of those students, and all of our staff members are the cornerstone of any decisions that any of us make. With that being said, for me personally, there are three areas that I feel particularly strongly about, safety. I believe that we have the protocols in place to provide for a safe in-school education option. I want to thank the facilities and the committees and everybody, and I know Joe's put a lot of work into that, with, from measuring classrooms to figuring out how many kids we can put in there. I think they've done a, a really fabulous job of coming up with options and presenting them into, at least to me, in a way that I feel that safety is something that can be accomplished. However, I do not feel that we can enter back into the schools without daily screening of every student, staff, and visitor. Masks must be worn by everyone in the building when feasible, understanding that for some students that's not realistic, and other accommodations will have to be made. Physical distancing needs to be at maximal levels when possible. If the decision is made of any form of remote learning, we must be fully prepared to transition of school learning, excuse me. Any form of in-school learning, we must be prepared to fully transition to remote learning easily, should the situation dictate that we do so. It is my understanding that the additional weeks of PD at the end of last year has created a more cohesive plan for remote learning to be a more viable and successful educational experience. And on that note, I will say, I was a little disappointed, some of the staff members indicated they did not feel like that was a good plan for remote learning, and I thought we had, we're kind of closer to being to that place, because I know that we all spoke strongly about, no matter what plan we use, we choose tonight, remote learning needs to be something that we can transition to easily and effectively, and I, the staff survey indicates that some of the members are, are not feeling that way. Accountability, with both the hybrid and remote options, both the staff and student accountability need to be at the forefront of remote learning. Students must log in at designated class times and attendance will be taken. In my opinion, our biggest challenge, or least successful aspect of remote learning in the spring, was the lack of accountability for all involved. Whatever is decided, please keep in mind that the current pandemic dictates that this plan be somewhat fluid, and that what is decided tonight will be what our reopening plan looks as, as of today. The situation will be monitored closely, and any adjustments needed will be acted upon quickly. Thank you very much. At this time, my, my feeling is also to take the recommendation of the serum committee for both Hinsdale and, uh, high school, middle high school.
Alright, so.
With modifications.
And, and. Alright, so I guess I'll go. Alright, so, um, my thought process, whenever I, you know, have to make a decision, um, for the district, is usually what's gonna be, what do I feel is gonna be of, um, maximum value to the most people. In this case, I really wasn't able to do that, it, it seemed to me that we had a pretty even split, um, in every group. It was, it was pretty close, I mean, you, you're, you've kind of got a fifty-fifty thing going, you know, for the most part, I mean, within, within a few points. So I really wasn't able to rely on my usual, um, pros and cons in that particular way. So, knowing that there was no way that I was gonna keep everybody happy, I took that off, totally off the table. It's just, that wasn't even a consideration, so I said to myself, if I can't make everybody happy, I'm gonna do my best to keep everybody safe, and that seemed pretty straightforward. Until, of course, I started thinking about it, and at what level of safety are we talking, in terms of physical safety? Are we talking about the emotional damage that's being done for those kids that, you know, needs in-person instruction? Knowing that even if they come back to the building, some aspects may be so different that there may be emotional harm caused there. You know, there's also kids that, you know, just have not thrived with remote learning, um, they're having educational delays, they're having all kinds of issues. So what do you do with that? Because there's harm being done there. And again, you know, you, there's, in that case, with the restrictions they're going back with, there's harm if they go in, there's harm if they don't, or at least the potential. And then you need to think about families, you know, families need to get back to work, you know, so there's, um, economic harm being done, um, you know, people not be able to make ends meet. So, um, I really struggled with that, and not only can I not keep everybody happy, I can't keep everybody safe, um, at least that's, that's my feelings. So one of my two-thirty wake-ups thinking about this, um, I came to the thought that, well, you know, I've had hard economic times in, in my life, um, you know, and it, it, in cases, it's taken years to get past it, years of hard work, but I've gotten past it. I've had, you know, emotional stuff in my life, you know, lost people, you know, whatever, um, and that has taken years, and you need to find a way to, to move on. My own son, you know, has developed mental delays, and has since he was two years old, and he has worked his entire school year, his entire academic career, and has finally caught up, and that has taken years and years and years and years and years. So when I'm looking at all of the things that could be of harm, I'm looking at all of these things that at some point can, uh, be overcome. The one thing that can't be overcome is if someone dies, if you die, you're gone, and that can't be overcome. So, my leaning at this point is to go fully remote in both buildings for the first quarter, assessing as we go, and adjusting as we need to. Also recognizing that some of these students desperately need, you know, face-to-face attention, identifying them, reaching out to them, and even though we are remote, trying to provide some form of, you know, in-person service for them. And again, you know, adjusting as we go, and, you know, taking it as the first quarter, that is where I'm at. Colleen?
First, I, I just want to say, you know, I apologize, I didn't mean to step on Jim, he's just barking me, I know we had talked about, at one point, I think last night, we were talking about going through things, or maybe it was, um, about the fact that the hybrid's not a hybrid in the middle high school, um, plan, and when he referred to it as a hybrid, I was just like, oh gosh, you know, we don't want to confuse, because I know we have gone around and around about it, I know parents are gonna be really confused by, well, that's a hybrid, but that's a full access, but, so I apologize, that was just like, my brain was getting ahead, you know, don't call it hybrid, don't, we, we really need to call it hybrid slash modified full access, because I will say, you know, and echoing everybody else, like, because I, I, I've even seen it in my own family, the, with the teacher, that my goodness, these people have put in monstrous amount of work, and even in the two weeks where you guys had, uh, after the students, where we had you guys stay to your days so that you could work together to start planning, and then off to the steering committee, I mean, especially the people on the steering committee, because, and then if any of them step into any, in any way with implementation, and you're like, yeah, and people are still in the building doing things, so there's like no summer for a lot of these people this year, I know, I know there's stipends for some of the work, but money is money, but my goodness, at the summer, there's no summer for some of these people, so I, all the work that goes into it, and so I just, I, I was disappointed that we didn't use, when it was presented to us, consistent terminology, that we knew, this is what a hybrid, you know, it's, it's half in, half out, the other half remote, this is full access, so if, if we would have had full terminology, I think it would have been easier to understand. I don't think it would have changed my preference, um, so getting to what my, my thought process on all this, and I, I I know, I speak for all of us, we, everybody, we lost sleep, we, okay, I know what I'm doing, half hour later, no, you know, now I don't know what I'm gonna vote, or, oh, I watched that webinar, and oh, I never thought of that, or I talked to Matt Upton last night, the legal counsel, and oh, I never thought of that, so I mean, it, it is so much back and forth, and I know parents are the same way, I'm gonna send my kid, I'm not gonna send my kid, oh, wait, now maybe it'll be okay, and, you know, so um, it, it is a big, huge decision, and I agree with Jim, the lack of national and state leadership to put on five volunteers, basically, and multiply that around all, every district in the nation, it, it, you know, it's, it's, it's been a lot of soul searching, a lot of research, a lot of relying on experts, a lot of back and forth, so what I feel, and I know people will probably think different stuff, and they're not believing here, but in listening to Sean, Sean and I really have not talked about our preferences in depth at all, but we are quite of, uh, very similar minds, um, I, I feel that it would be best to start fully remotely in both buildings, um, and pick a date to reassess, and now I said like, pick a date near the, like, I've seen many, not many, but several other districts in the state, not necessarily as many quite around us, but some are, um, but, uh, picking a date, and like the end of the first quarter scene, but right before that, kind of reassess. I think we could spend these weeks before school starts tightening up our remote learning plan, which I think we're well on the way anyway, and we're, everybody I think agrees. We need a solid, which I think we've been building on it, but we need a solid, solid remote learning plan, because when flu season hits, or later, and what's up, like, there's some point for, might not be for a very long time, or who knows, we're going remote at some point, so, but you, it's the expectation, so um, or I shouldn't say the expectation, the assumption, um, so we could be spending these weeks tightening up our remote learning plan, setting up very clear expectations for all involved, staff, students, parents, everybody involved, um, and then, like, and we would, you know, just keep the school board updated, keep our communication plan out to everybody, so we know where we are, um. I've been working on compiling some resources for families, um, such as like, more information about the FFCRA, because I hear people saying that, um, you know, they're gonna have to quit their job, well, and I'm not knowing any of the situation, but you know, the FFCRA does have the Families First Coronavirus Response Act till December thirty-first at least, and I'm sure it will be, I hope it will be extended. You know, can provide up to a certain percentage of your pay, two-thirds, you know, whatever, in which, in different situations, but, you know, to help, and, and there's a provision for, especially if you have to stay home with your child in remote learning, so I reached out to Senator Jay Khan and asked if he had any resources he could help out with, for when we need to go remote, if we start remote, whatever, you know, for families. Governor Sununu held a press conference yesterday, and he spoke about how we have low case numbers now, and I see that on some parents and some of the surveys and some of the teachers, that, you know, our case numbers are low compared to, you know, Florida, or this or that, and that our case numbers have steadily, the average daily case number for the last two weeks, or week, week to two weeks, or whatever it was, it started to increase without an increase in testing. So if our daily numbers are steadily increasing, and we're not testing more, as, you know, the president says, test more, we get more numbers, no, that's not what happened, then we're just getting more cases. And according to the Keene Sentinel yesterday, right now, um, as of yesterday, Teshaw has at least sixteen active cases, eighteen and at least one in eight other towns, could be four each in eight other towns, but they don't report the number if it's under five. SAU twenty-nine's tipping point is to go remote at twenty-five active cases for a hundred thousand, uh, residents in the county, Teshaw County has eighty thousand residents, roughly, that's twenty cases, so if SAU twenty-nine's tipping point is twenty cases, and we're at sixteen on August sixth, you know, it's possible they would be remote before they even go in the building, and that could be us. And then there's, I won't get into the, but the studies that are showing that kids and students, and even younger ones, are more spreaders of it than had initially thought, and, and there's bigger studies going on that will be out later in the fall, that are studying other schools that have opened, schools in other countries who, which I think it's hard to compare us to, because schools in other countries, sorry, other countries have gotten a handle on this, and we have not, so and I just also have a concern with, I have, um, family in another state, uh, who, the, one of my family members goes into the homes and deal, you know, assists in homes with families. She's full PPE, knows what she's doing, and she brought COVID home to form the entire family, including her eighty-year-old mother. And she's decked out in full PPE going in, and assists in families, not wearing, not wearing protection, not wearing, you know, social distancing. And we see on Facebook, people on vacation, doing all sorts of stuff, so we can't control what people do outside the school. And if she is a thirty-year veteran, a, a nurse, and she brought it home, what chance does our staff have not to bring it home, or or the eight-year-olds have not to bring it home? So for those reasons, I think that it would be, you know, we help our families out, get them resources if we go remote, um, but to start remote and reassess. I'm done.
Alright.
Sorry?
Kayla, the floor is yours.
Okay.
Kayla, you're the deciding one.
I know, that's fine, guys. Um, do you want?
You could have gone first.
I said I didn't want to go last. Okay, so looking at all the surveys that for staff, it was about forty percent who preferred hybrid, uh, twenty-two percent full access, and thirty-seven preferred remote. So putting the hybrid and full access together, to me, that says sixty-two percent of our staff wants to be back in the building, and some have more parents, uh, it was pretty, so fifty-two percent want all in-person, thirty-three percent wanted a mix, so a hybrid and of in-person and remote, and fourteen wanted all remote, fourteen percent. So putting those together, also that, so eighty-five percent of our parents would like children back in the building in some capacity. In Hinsdale, I know Teshaw County is different, but in Hinsdale, we have zero COVID cases right now, and we do have a lot of families who struggle. We have a high percent of free and reduced lunch. We think that, you know, schools don't just provide education, they provide court services, and for some students, it's safety also. Um, I have to say a huge thank you to Sean Lee, who has done a lot of work with facilities, and with the EyeWave C, if we're able, are we, we're doing that right?
Yep.
Okay, so the air purifier that kills mold, bacteria, and viruses in the air, and he's up our filters, the Merb.
Merb eleven, yep.
It keeps sucking into me, you're not.
I know, I won't be using this one. Um, so with all of that, I feel that for our district, it is, you know, it's about safety, but I feel like keeping kids home isn't always what is safer, and I know, as an educator, feeling effective and like you're doing your job is important, and obviously being safe, you know, with the virus is also important, but I feel like we have so many different procedures and policies, and the filters and everything, that we can at least attempt going back and have it be obviously everything to see how it goes. Without with cases, or it wasn't, we weren't able to keep kids safe, then I think we would need to reassess. But I would like to see, uh, hybrid, um, the half-day model at the elementary school was a little, I don't know, working with kids in school, half-days were always off, so having two half-days, Monday through Friday, I just kind of wondered if that's how everyone was feeling about that, and if doing the whole days, you know, having half the kids there for two days, and half the kids there for the other two days, would maybe work a little bit better, other than for the younger kids. So I would like in-person, but I would kind of like a hybrid.
Can I answer her question about the?
Can I answer her question about the, you might email with the breakdown, that would answer her question.
So, Kayla, it's up to you, you have the floor, if you wanna yield, if you wanna yield the floor to a question, you can, but I kinda wanted everyone to be able to.
I just would answer her question, I would just answer that one.
Well, I think regardless, I would feel a little bit better if we had half the students in the building at a time. Uh, if Jim and Julia are both staying going with the steering committee. I think I would feel comfortable with that, I would kind of like to do half to start, I think slowly opening, rather than having, you know, everyone in, might be a smarter, not smarter, but easier transition. So my thought is going with hybrid. So, I'm not really a hybrid.
So.
But we don't have a motion, if we have a motion.
I wanna be clear, so you're, do you want hybrid and both?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so has everyone had their say? All right, then it's up to someone to make a motion. Of course you can.
For, uh, Joe, this question goes out to you, and I know you can't see it, uh, for, for your staff, you're a big part of this committee, and you know. A hybrid in the elementary school, to me, presents an additional challenge for teachers in being prepared for both in-classroom and remote learning for the same class at the same time. So I, I kinda felt like maybe that's why we felt full access at that level was more appropriate for the elementary children, because now you're asking your staff to, we wanna see them and have them half-days or every other day or something, but then they're also not prepared to go remote teach the other day, so tell, talk to us a little bit about the challenges that the hybrid in the elementary poses for this.
Yeah, so, um, so the idea was that students would have purposeful work that they would also be doing at home. Not necessarily homework, but the follow-up work that you might be doing after you've been instructed in the morning. You would not spend as much time doing guided practice in the classroom. You would move on, do a little bit of guided practice in the classroom, on to science, and you're doing science instruction. Be able to get, um, you know, more of the core curriculum done in that short timeframe. But then they go home in the afternoon, and they have some purposeful follow-up work to do.
How many kids do we think would really do that for a full work in the afternoon?
Well, that was why we ended up saying it's almost better to have them there all day, even if they're in separate rooms.
Right, because I, I just feel like you have the instruction, and then a half-day, school's over.
So that's what at least one committee said, was that at least we've got eyes on them if they're in separate locations within the building. So the other model that we considered was more, I think, along what Kayla is coming out, but didn't really go very far with it, was a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday disinfecting day. Teachers would be more of a planning day, Thursday, Friday, another set of cohorts. But with that model, you weren't seeing kids for like five days, and we never really thought about a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday model, which doesn't make you miss kids for that long a period, it cuts it down to three days, but we didn't actually consider that model, and that would be the same effect of having half the kids present at any one time.
The other issue with the hybrid in that way is that you talked about, I feel like that's even more of a challenge for some families, like how can you work a, a work schedule around a half-day, like kids at school, or they're at school Tuesdays and Thursdays, I feel like for all the stakeholders, for the teachers, for the families, the hybrid model, a hybrid model such as that just compounds the anxiety of everybody's home life and schedule, and wow, he's home at eleven, my son's home at eleven-thirty, he's technically supposed to be in school till three, but I have to work from home in the afternoon, but I'm still working, and is, am I doing enough, am I the role of remote, you know, that was a lot of parents were feeling, like they were so responsible for what was happening during remote learning, that that's why I agree that the elementary should be more, because at the high school, the high school, the remote learners, they're gonna walk in, they're gonna be watching class, they're gonna be taking attendance, they're gonna be responsible for that. I think at the elementary level, having eyes on is, is super important, and I think a hybrid, not that I don't agree that some combination is, I just feel like it is, creates more chaos and anxiety.
So I like the full-day approach as a parent, that's easier to handle, quite honestly. I think with kindergarten, if we end up back in the building, we should consider half-day for this year, for this pandemic, whatever. Just because I don't think it's developmentally great to have five-year-olds trying to navigate this for six hours straight. For the, I think, full hybrid days would be better for everyone, I know being in the school, like, half-days are always like, it gets a little crazy, it's different, it's shorter, so I would like to see a full-day model for first and up. But I, and I do recognize scheduling that is gonna be tricky for parents, but it's two days of them in the building where they wouldn't be if it was all remote. So, and I think to start, it makes it the transition easier, we can get into a flow with half the students screening, half the students distancing, half the students, I think it would just make transitioning a little bit less difficult.
You're saying half-days?
No, half the students, I think a full-day model would be better.
Full-day model for half the population?
Yes, and I think they could figure out how it is worked, and you know, going only three days versus five days is probably better, but what does that do to sanitize? So I think that would be up to administration to configure, but I would like to be half the students in for two days, and then if we don't have any cases and things are going well after the first quarter, then going all-in.
Just a question on that, I'm just trying to turn around my head around how that would look like, so then we, so the teachers, though, would be full day, all day with half, and then now, how, what are they doing with the other half of their third-grade class on the days that they're not there?
So it would be the same idea as this is your direct instructions, and then on the other days, obviously, that's really for the teachers to decide, what I'm envisioning is this is my direct instructions, the days you're not here are the days that you're doing whatever you will work from home, or however they decide they wanna work that, I think doing that every other day would actually make that a little bit easier, because you'd have a day of direct instruction, a day of home, and then they have their planning sanitizing day, and then it'd be a day of direct instruction, a day at home.
But the teachers.
That means, go ahead.
Hold on, Julia had first.
But then the teachers, every day, have half of their class that they have to manage remote, and half their class they have to.
That was my question.
Class, so that, to me, sounds like a kind of almost insurmountable challenge and ask for the teachers to say, okay, I've gotta, now I've gotta go, I'm gonna be in class all day, and now I gotta go and make sure that all my half my other class that were supposed to be doing all this work for, from home today, that that went as planned, so that I'm prepared to know how to teach them tomorrow when they come back into class. Uh, you know what I'm saying, I just feel like for this staff, and you, then you're asking them basically to be a full-time remote and a full-time in-class teacher.
See, I think with the day off in the middle, though, you have that day to plan, to check in, to figure out where everyone's at, and then go for your next two days, so to me, I think as an educator, I would be comfortable that more so than just remote, I think it's remote teaching, but that's obviously, you know, everybody has a different opinion, but personally, I rather be seeing kids for your day.
Would you look for days full week and get them their hours?
Um, so then what Julia said about insurmountable, um, for the teachers, like they're doing all their road, all their, um, in, in class, that's kinda how I feel about the proposed model of the middle high school, because they aren't in teaching in front of the kids right there, they're live teaching to their own kids, they have to pay attention to, all right, um, this, um, a kid is asking a question in front of me, I got to try and also watch the chat to see what the kid is asking me remotely. Then when I go home, I have to grade papers, whatever, prepare, whatever, do it, so that's five days a week, so we, if, if we think like the overwhelming three days a week, we're asking them to be overwhelmed five days a week at the middle high school, so.
Julia wants some clarification on if we did a four-day, does that give us the number of, you know, hours or days that we need?
Does that depend on how many hours, uh, nine ninety for middle highs, so you have to schedule, you know, ten-hour days, you have ninety-nine days, the elementary, so it just depends on the number of hours in the day. Uh, that's, that's how you make the nine ninety, uh, for middle highs.
And I.
Kayla, was.
Um, so. Going up of that also, ideally, this would be for a quarter, and we would potentially move I would hope all in, but, well, so we could have and I also wanna point out, if we go all-in and do the steering committee, we're gonna have kids remote. And we don't know what our numbers are going to be, so I think that could happen anyways, except you won't have a day to plan, prep, and check in.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, wait, hold on a second.
Nine forty-five for elementary, nine ninety for high school.
Okay, all right, the same question, all right, Joe?
So to that question, um, I know we, we looked at it, and when we were talking about a hybrid model, we look at half-days, which were, it's equivalent, really, two days versus two and a half, half-days. We included student check-in time and office hours for that day as instructional time. So we had, we'd have two half-days for each, I mean, two full-days for each cohort in Kayla's model, plus we'd have the half-day on Wednesday in the model, and that would give you the nine hundred and forty-five, we just, we ended up being slightly over it.
Okay.
Um, Wayne, I know that might not make much of a difference, but do you know if the hour requirement is changing because the governor took those three days of uh, student, like, now they only have to go a hundred and seventy-seven days, a hundred and seven, rather than a hundred and eighty, because he gave those three days to teachers, so is that gonna change the hours at all?
So that's a great question, I haven't heard any clarification, uh, but certainly something to see, you know, so.
Can I, and, and if you don't, I mean, to answer your question, that I, I know I just, I jumped in and I apologize, but when you said, you made a comment, and I paraphrase it, because I don't remember exactly what it was, but that, when you're talking about the hybrid in the elementary school, that, you know, if you had a sense of how many teachers, you know, like that plan. When we got the surveys, it was broken out by how many in the elementary answered, and how many in the high school answered, but it wasn't broken up by, if you say hybrid, are you voting for, are you preferring the elementary's hybrid or the middle, middle high school hybrid, you just said hybrid, so I went through the surveys last night and tallied up who, each, how it broke out in each building, and I sent the email to Sean, and he sent it out, I don't know if you didn't see it. So if, so, so, I don't know, it's not much of a difference, but that way, it shows you how many people in which building said hybrid.
Okay, I did the totals on the, the first sheet, I think, total first I made, so that was all teachers, not, I didn't break it down.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it, it's not a big difference, but just to answer your question, just because when you say hybrid, oh, but which hybrid are you talking about, yeah?
Any other questions from the board? Um, you know what I wanna do, I wanna see, because the administration that is here has heard us really their hearts and souls, um, is there anything you guys wanna add, because you, you guys are the ones gonna be heading all of this up, so, do you have? Do you have?
Well, I, I would like to say that, like, the two full-day hybrid model is not something that we put a lot of time and effort in. So I'd be very concerned if that was a model that was chosen.
Okay. Okay, Anne?
I'm glad I don't have to make the decision.
Thank you.
But whatever you decide, we're gonna work our best to implement it, and I will say this, you know, when we extended the remote learning opportunity, I thought, oh, man, it's three, I can't. But last week, and I shared this with the superintendent, he meant to me on purpose. He didn't just drop his stuff up in the box outside, he came in to say, and he wanted to extend this to people, that a huge thank you for believing in me. This is a boy who went through all kinds of life turmoil with his family, and things turned around at the end of the summer here, and he got all his work done, and he wanted to say thank you for believing in me, and so I think that's, that's the number-one message that I wanna say, we believe in whatever decision you make, we're gonna do our best. Thank you.
Wayne?
So I would just, uh, thank, uh, all the people who participated in the GASP, and all the surf, and all the time that went into the whole thing. And I am grateful for the serious approach that they took. Um, the, in the act, you know, to recreate a decision that was made on June twenty-sixth or June twenty-fourth, because we don't know all the data, we don't know all the compensation. But at this point, you know, I felt good about handing it off to the board, and I didn't fill out a survey because I didn't wanna get married to, you know, like, take your plan, and then after, it meant something else. Absolutely confident that this group can implement any of the three. And so I'm, I'm waiting on board directors, and Wayne, you go.
Chad, I know you're like brand spanking new, and you're probably like, you're probably like, oh my God, he, I don't want him to call, I mean, you are welcome to.
So I, I would just like to say that one of the things that I really valued when I was in the process of my job search was to land in a highly collaborative district. And I am really impressed by the level of conversation that I've heard amongst teachers and administrators, and at the board level, um, regarding the well-being of the staff and the students, and just the gravity of the situation, and how are we going to do this, right, I mean, that's how are we going to get through this? I just wanna say that after listening over the course of the past month, definitely feeling that can light a difference.
Well, fun.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, if there are no other questions from the board, we are back to looking for a motion.
Motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the bylines of the steering committee for full-access learning at the elementary school, and what we were, we are referring to as the hybrid in the middle high school, uh, anticipating modifications to be added.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, now comes the fun part, the discussion, and this is when you guys can start throwing in your modifications and the stuff that you, you'll have. All right, Anne, Julie, you made the motion, why don't you start?
Uh, I would certainly, uh, make sure that the modification for daily screening be part of the, the, uh, the plan. I guess that is my, I feel, like, I feel like Sean and Joe and everybody, but feel confident in the information they've given, but the safety, the big, big thing for me is, um, is the screening and the safety part, I think the other issues I have, such as accountability and that sort of stuff, that's, those are directives for the administration to make sure part of your plan. Yes.
Who would like to go down?
You say screening, is that what the question is?
I feel like those, the COVID questions we talked about last night, maybe doing that weekly, that kind of thing, I think, I think modified, all the motion needs to say is modified health screening, and then we can determine what those are. I think we could just leave it at modified health screening, and then the logistics that we talked about working out later will all be part of that plan.
that we talked about working out later will all be part of that plan.
Okay, all right. I'll go.
This I seconded. The only two things that I have is that I don't think you can wait for the monthly meetings to get reports of where you are with cases within the district and community. So I think I had posed the, every two weeks, for every other week that we're not having our meetings, that in a two-week period, we get a report, like, via email.
Okay.
And it could be something as simple as an Excel file, doesn't have to be obviously specific, but it should break down any incidents.
Yeah.
And then the other point was, do we keep weekly parental COVID attack? Yeah. So are we keeping it a weekly basis?
Okay. Can I just, okay, always.
The other, this is a modification, I know, and I did, I don't have a committed memory, but I know in the plan, and I, I can't, I think it's the overall, I can't remember if it's broken out by, you know, each building, but face covering is in the plan, I believe it's like recommended for staff but not students, and I, it was recommended but not required, but not, was it recommended for students? Or was it just staff?
Recommended for students.
Okay, okay. So that required for the staff, recommended for the students. Okay. So I would like to, and obviously, see what everybody says here, we want to have a discussion on it, was, it would be recommend, sorry, required for all. And then in the implementation phase, they would work out, like, mask breaks, how if you have a doctor's note or whatnot, for example, if you can't wear a mask, the procedure for how to get an exception. We talked to Matt Updike last night about that, so Wayne could fill you in on that, just like we talked with Matt last night, or we talked with, about the weekly screening form that we were talking about. We were leaving that a topic legal. So, but yeah, some modification to face coverings to be required for all and, you know, implementation would match it up.
Obviously, except when there's a medical
Oh, absolutely, yeah, they, for all, and then they would hack up and
Yep, okay, I just want to make sure that's
Absolutely. I hope that means
And did you have another one? What was your second?
That was it, because I did have a third, but then
Okay.
So my question is going to be regarding kindergarten, and if we go have
I would see now, based on the full day kindergarten students, so we'd have to work that out, but my thinking is that if we had a half-day in-person kindergarten, they would have a half-day of some kind of supplemental, remote, you know, some kind of guided practice, that something from the home that would fill our, our full day, so I don't think the adequacy would be compromised. That would be my, my position. So if you did want to do the half-day kindergarten, I believe there are, you know, staff still throwing me about that, that we could still get adequate. It seems that we have to, we'd have to work it out. So it depends on how the instructional model looked at the DOE. And I do think they'll have some
So did you want to say half-day kindergarten pending adequacy?
I want to say that should be on, that should be an option. Should the administration and staff feel that's not, as CDC says, as developmentally appropriate? And I feel like especially is a lot, but I want to use that as an option.
So do you want to add it into the modifications as an option?
Yes.
And do you want it as an option pending adequacy funding?
If you word it like that, though, if we find out we can have adequacy funding, then does it become?
Then it's whatever it is in the
Then it's whatever, then they can decide. It's still whatever they can decide. Okay. Just want to make sure that they can still decide, like, that didn't trigger it to, all right, now we're doing it.
No, no, it is, if, if, if we didn't get the funding, which would then nullify that modification, it would revert to what the plan was without the modification.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right. So give me one second. Kindergarten. Pending That was an option. Does anybody have anything else? All right, so the motion is for all in, there'd be all-in option at the elementary school, the hybrid option at the middle high school, with the modification of health screenings for students and staff, reporting to the board every two weeks, the weekly parental, is that a COVID permission, COVID disclaimer, COVID waiver? What is that?
Survey.
Survey? All right, so the weekly, the weekly COVID survey, face coverings for all, and optional half-day kindergarten pending adequacy.
And
The optional says that.
I think the optional
Yeah.
Trying to figure out how to put that in.
Well, because it's not just pending adequacy.
It says optional.
It says, it says, it says, so it's half, optional, half-day kindergarten pending adequacy. So you still have the option, but if we don't get the money, then we're taking that option. Is there anything else? No further discussion? All right. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, in his words, tricky for me, because while I oppose the model, if we're going to do the model, I am totally in favor of all those modifications.
What do you mean, the model? You mean the recommended?
Yeah.
Okay.
So all those opposed. I'll say no. So it'll be three to two. All right, motion carries, and that's what we're going with, folks. All right, so now, Wayne, we're now going to have to have the conversation on start date, or are we going to talk to the union first?
So we'll talk to the union.
Okay.
But I do hope that we can delay the start. I think, I think they'll appreciate that gesture. I think they, they see the issues we see, but we can't sell it, we can't arbitrarily make that.
All right. Did we have anything else on reopening academics? Did I cover everything? Am I missing anything? Because there's a lot.
Countless hours to get to this point.
All right, so everyone has the packet that, on your table, the packets that the athletic director gave us for fall sports? No, we're going to vote on it Monday, but we're going to, you know, at least start the conversation today, because we don't generally, I believe it's the best practice, to just hold on to that night and digest it, but we should have a conversation, since we have the plan. And Wayne, do you want to go through? Do you want to just do, give us the overview, go through, give us the
Like your, I feel like your announcement said we weren't even going to talk about sports.
We're not deciding on sports, we're not taking citizen comments. Citizen comments will be handled on Monday.
Okay.
And we will absolutely
We're just going to get
We will absolutely let people talk about sports. We've been getting a lot of emails, but, yeah, but we need to have at least the beginning conversation tonight, otherwise it's Otherwise, it's the same thing as having all the information given before it's kind of the same thing. So let's have the overview, right? You get us started?
Yeah, so this is in conjunction with the NHIAA, which is the, which is the, the field to follow, I feel, the cool, the sanctions of activities. So the, the big difference between what we would have done, we told them we were moving now, this is the doctor's plan, visiting teams, if they get off the bus, will be temperature checked, all kids will be temperature checked, yes, in their soccer, we're really just talking about soccer right now, that's the only thing we're counting on running. So if we had more interest, maybe we'd be cross-country, but I think people would agree cross-country is probably not the issue. So the smallest would be, more than all, you can go right down the list, and every modification that's been recommended by NHIAA, as far as equipment, as far as the officials, the spectators, removing the leaders, putting them over any other side of the field, so that all of the teams, and we can obviously be socially distant from the sideline, people have to bring their own lawn chairs, locker room, would be an issue, or else if they can't send a child on that. So it would be a very different experience, you know, than imagine, we have a trainer who has generated this for our vote, there are a lot of kids who really want, in fact, I think there were over sixty students who have some interest. So there are a lot of kids that would participate in this, outside, obviously, that's a huge issue, all kinds of transmission. And the parents would choose, so that makes it somewhat different than, I don't know, regular, they're going to underestimate the sports. So, you hear, they have a question on Monday to answer all your questions. If you have kind of general questions, you want me to get to you, and if you do that, maybe we Anything you really feel that he needs to come prepared to speak to, I think this would be appropriate opportunity. But right now, I think he's comfortable with the plan. Sean and I met with him today and kind of took out a few things. Our attorney agreed that we could do the waiver, we could be part of this whole thing, we could have a waiver, we could participate. And so a couple of things you might consider is, obviously, we don't want ever to have a COVID case in Hinsdale. We haven't had one in a while, but we look around this. And the interest that kids have in this sport, and our ability, I think, to have them be part of our community anti-spread campaign, might mitigate what we would consider to be potential risk. So it's something to consider, be everybody in the community to do their best, wear masks, social distance, do what they can, you know, not to be one of those shots that you see on television of young people getting together. This, I think, would help with that. It's a board decision, a decision on Monday, there will be, there are many kids awaiting this, but they wouldn't start until the date that we're proposing, the later date for school. So it's not like we'd be doing this right away, but line up, we could get officials, we could get everything set, you know, obviously, there's the social distancing on the bus, we could do all that sort of thing. So I think they've got a pretty good plan, and they'll
The only question I have is, we keep saying, you know, we heard that there's sixty-whatever last week, and maybe subtract however many for cross-country, if we could just get the number of how many kids have shown interest, and how that, I'm just curious how it compares to last year, just to see, you know, and I know it's going to be different because some kids graduated, and we have some kids coming over, but just to see if we can see how many parents or kids are just like, not doing it because of COVID, you would, you know what I mean, kind of get a feel, but just, just because we keep saying about, 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 we just like to have the number. Yeah.
So I just had a question about determining teams we will play. Is there playing, so that we're playing other schools, I'm assuming, it says, so parameters around playing other teams? If that town has, you know, a high number of cases, we should probably not? I don't know if that gets into
No, I think that's a great idea. I do know that NHIAA has said, listen, if you need to postpone the season for two weeks, you'd miss some days, or there's a team that you don't want to play because maybe they have more cases in their town. It does not, it does not prohibit you from moving into playoffs at the end of the season. So they, they added some flexibility, understanding what we're all dealing with. But I, those are all, those are
Yeah, I actually had the same question as I reported, so some sort of reporting of incidents, checking who gets the calls.
Yeah.
If a coach self-quarantines for any reason, do we, would we Would we, the trainer, and if that person self-quarantines, would we have a backup? I'm just a little concerned about the bus transportation. Would we, would we, I'll be sure we'd have the transportation for traveling, for the travel dates? If a player is injured, what are the protocols for that? Serious injury, what happens to that student? If kids are remote, can they
That is a question that we spoke of today. So those are areas we're already thinking about, but we'll give it an opportunity to flesh out a response that the key, and you can check with NHIAA. I think the games are going to be scheduled on weekends against the school day. So I mean, this is a COVID version of soccer, but certainly, it's still, you know, it's a
Anne, do you have something you want to add?
I just wanted, homeschool kids can play on sports teams, so I don't think it matters if they're remote or not remote.
I think the question
So let's go.
I think the question was, if we go to full remote, are we still going to have sports? That was my question.
Okay.
My question is, if the parent removed the And I think that, at this point, I think that, had we gone remote for our model, we certainly have that, but at this point, since we're not, if we go remote, it's probably a less case, so certainly, as my
So that would be the answer.
We would absolutely have to read that, you know, but as far as just if someone I think they should still play with it or not.
So, the, today's Wednesday, okay, yeah, so yesterday, Tuesday, the governor's press conference that I referenced earlier, you know, for a different matter, the Dr. Chan, I think is his name, is the state epidemiologist, who's always at all the press conferences, he got a question about contact sports, and he said, I wrote it down, I didn't think we'd be talking about it today, but I totally see why, I just didn't make it through, but I don't know if it was me, but to get the exact quote, but he said that, something to the effect of, it is fair to say that contact sports are too dangerous right now to play in their original form, and he recommends that schools and, you know, get creative, I think was the phrase he used. So soccer is technically, NHIAA listed as a contact sport, so what things are NHIAA, other districts, people we play, us, what are we thinking about, how to get creative if the state epidemiologist herself says they're too dangerous to play in their original form? So he said that yesterday, I don't know if anybody else is thinking about it, he said that officially, but that's like what he said at the press conference, so it was just maybe go, oh, okay, what does he mean?
There are
But on the field, okay, he said play in the original, that's what I'm just, just want to throw it out that he said that, so I don't know, I don't know where, which way, because I haven't gotten the information, I could not tell you if he had to vote today, I would have to think, because I have like no idea, you know, so I'm not asking that to be obnoxious, I'm just like, he said it, so I wanted to just ask it.
Seems like he has a pretty good idea. He, he has a really good document, so I think, I think so.
Okay. I never played soccer, so I don't know what modifications. Get it?
I know.
It's not fair, you could see your thoughts.